Let's call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting and thank everyone for being here. Did anyone intend to have public comment? We don't have anybody signed up. Okay. All right, we'll go to item number two. Interviews for vacancy of the Board of Commissioners. What's your pleasure, Commissioners? How do you want to do this?
Could we do it alphabetically? Ask everyone to wait, call them in one at a time, and have a maximum of 10 minutes per candidate, and ask questions in the order we usually give people comments.
It's whatever your pleasure is.
I'll be paying.
Yeah.
Alphabetically, reverse alphabetically, or any way you want to do it?
Pack it set up alphabetically, that's easy.
That's kind of what I was thinking about. That works fine.
It's easier to follow?
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
So if everyone would just wait back there, we'll call them in one at a time. So they don't hear each other's answers.
Uh, all right. Where would you like them to go? They've got two bathrooms back there.
You should have pointed that out.
Well, I guess we could ask the judge to stay here.
That was a test.
He follows the record, boy.
It's waited to be called.
Well, I can't say he had anything else to say.
Can we just put a microphone there at the table? Heard y'all wanted to stand.
They can just sit at the table.
Judge, you're welcome to have a seat at the table there. We'll put a microphone over there. You don't have to stand. All right, how do you want to proceed?
I'm going in, ask questions, and go down.
I think ask questions. And then, when they're done, they're welcome to stay because they're done.
All right, well...
And if we go in the order we usually do, it would be Rick, Brian, Paige. Well, are you participating in the questions or not?
Well, I must close the board, I guess I could.
You should.
Okay, then it would be you, Rick, Brian, Paige, and you.
Okay.
10 minutes.
All right.
And Heather, you can call in.
Okay, you won't actually time it, sure.
You ready?
Yep.
Judge Arnold, you've had property here in Holden Beach for on and off, and your family for how many years?
Went back into 50s. We had a house, my parents had a house here when Hurricane Hazel came through. And so that was in 54.
Yeah, and you've owned other houses and you currently live here on the island now.
Sue and I had a house.
You've been a public servant for how many years?
My goodness, going back to 1969. And all of those years were not in public office, thank goodness. But it's been close to it.
Yeah. And the public offices that you have served in, obviously you have the title of judge. Somewhere you began and somewhere you ended up in public service. Can you give us a quick summary of that?
Yeah, I can. Well, of course, I was in the North Carolina General Assembly. From there, I became a judge on the Court of Appeals. I served with, I was a junior member of that court for a long time. The members I served with were all World War II veterans. Very informative and educational to me. I also served a stint as the administrative director of office of the courts. As you know, we have three branches of government. The courts do not come under the governor or the administration of North Carolina, but they have their own. And the director of the AOC handles that. All the courts in North Carolina. I have a lot of titles and jobs. I chaired the Judicial Standards Commission for seven or eight years. That's the commission that judges, conducts of judges. It's not known about by the general public a whole lot. It's kind of like internal affairs with military or law enforcement. I did that. After I retired, of course, I knew a great many of the lawyers throughout this state. Went to work with Lawyers Mutual. That's a malpractice coverage company for lawyers in this state. We've had a company down in Georgia also, but basically it was North Carolina. So that's some of the things that I've done.
Served on some various boards throughout the state.
I've served on a lot of boards and commissions. And, you know, let me say about that because I think it's relevant. My philosophy about serving on a commission, nobody ever appointed me god, emperor, for anything. It's the combined wisdom of the board, whatever commission or committee or court, particularly on appellate judge. And it's not what I can do, but what I can do in connection with working on that board or commission. That, to me, is always a question.
You've also served in some capacities as Board of Trustees at one or two colleges.
Oh, yes, I have. I've served at East Carolina University. I also served a good stint at Camel University. In fact, I was on that board when we created the law school at Camel, which has done very well. My wife, by the way, got the first Doctor of Education degree that that university gave.
What's the greatest asset that you think you could bring to this empty chair here in town of Holden Beach?
Well, I think I have what all of you have. Commitment to this town, to this beach, this community. Mr. Ed Cameron, whom I adored growing up, told me one time, he said, "Girl, you'll never get lost on a road if you remember where you started." Holden Beach is one of the places where I started. Your question indicated my family, not just my parents, but grandparents and my granddaughters are now the fifth generation in my line here. In 1960, I had a date with a young woman, Sue Johnson. I figured it was morning out. My good fortune, about two weeks later, I was down here in my parents' house enjoying the beach. She came down with a group of her friends, and we fell in love that week in June in 1964. Years later, we were married and stayed married for 55 years until she passed away. So I have a commitment to this community. Been here off and on all my life. Where I now make my home. It's not just the place I come to. This is retired, lived, basically anywhere I want to, here that I want to be. So I'm committed. Whether you ask me to serve on this board or not, I'm committed to this family.
Is it fair to say you know your way around Raleigh and know some important people up there?
Well, I've been around Raleigh a long time. People who think I know my way around, I'm not sure I do anymore. Been around as long as I have. You meet a lot of people, get to know a lot of things.
Yeah. As far as ability to get grants, do you know any connections? Not that you have to name anyone, but do you know how that works and where to go?
Well, I know how the process works, and you have to work the process. Kind of like the tide, it helps and flows. You have to work.
Yeah. As far as people like the governor and so forth, you know, people like that on a first-name basis, I think you've got...
Well, it's said I've been around a long time. And, you know, and that doesn't mean that they're gonna do anything for you, but if you can get in the door, at least you've got a chance.
I know I was talking to Secretary of State the other day, and she asked about you as an example, the kind of connections you may have to get a phone call through. But I don't want to monopolize the time here. Let's see, who was next? Mr. Rick?
Well, I wrote down all the questions that I was gonna ask you, Judge Arnold, and Mayor Holden took most of all, most all of them. And the name was, you know, you know what the board's been doing and what, you know, what direction we're going? And I just, you think, do you think that you can assist us in moving forward?
Well, if I didn't think so, I certainly wouldn't take any position on the board. And let me say, it's my community now. And it has been, but this is where I live. I'm not just visiting back and forth. I'm very keenly aware that this is a job you never asked for. Cheryl Brown died, and you were filling a seat. I have a commitment to this town, to making it remain a good place and a better place, just as all of you did. I very much believe in working together. As I say, I used to do programs for appellate judges with the ADA. And I told them, "Nobody appointed you god, emperor." You get a lot smarter when you listen to what other people have to say. Don't let your opinion determine the facts. Let the facts determine your opinion. And there are facts. You know, the opposite of leadership is not followers, being a follower, it's really being a pessimist. And you have to have some feeling of enthusiasm and optimism for something like you do. It's harder, in my view, more challenging being in public service than any time in my life. But it's, we've been around up close the way you have and the way I have. There are those times that you lose and you win some. That's a good one. But the process can be very messy, and it can be very disappointing. But there are times when it can be energizing and inspiring and rewarding. And so to have an opportunity to have a voice in the direction this town goes is appealing.
Obviously, I took more than my share of time. Do y'all want to allow more time for all the candidates?
I have one question I would like to ask. You know, every year we do our objectives. So our objectives require the public record for this year. I was wondering, are there any objectives that you see that we should do that we haven't captured in our last couple years of setting our objectives and priorities? Do you have something that you are thinking about already for the next set of objectives for fiscal year 23, '24?
No, I do not. I will say this. I think that any board or commission like this, of course, you have to deal with immediate issues, whether it has to do with job carts, open, broken posts, and traffic, and parking. These things are overwhelming. But it's always anticipating the fallout. We Southerners are known for holding on to the past. Whatever his name was in Mississippi, notwithstanding the past is dead. You anticipate and preserve for the future. And I commend this board. I think you've done it. It's appealing to me that you can't, we don't live in a science fiction world where you can come from the future and picture the mistakes. You've got to anticipate the fallout and look to the future. And preserving the future, I think, is always part of any board or commission, governing commission like this. Hold up a desk. I have no agenda. I have no program session that I would just point at.
Did you have anything?
No, I'm just gonna say, Judge, I've had the pleasure of meeting you, and we've talked in my office for hours. So I've asked the questions that I needed to ask. I would like to say thank you for your consideration for serving on this board, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Well, I appreciate all of you. I could use anything.
No, I don't think I've covered everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Judge Arnold.
Appreciate you continuing to choose Holden Beach.
It's a great place. It stands out.
Yeah, Judge, you don't have to leave at this point. If you will, just sit at the table. It's more comfortable than standing up. Speak into the microphone, please.
You said stand up?
No, you can sit in a chair and speak in the microphone. It's easier than having to stand up over there. Okay, what the Commissioners have determined, we're gonna ask you questions. We have 10 minutes or so allocated. It's being timed. And we have a predetermined order of questionnaires here. So questioners, I guess I should say. So to you, sir, I understand that you do live here on Holden Beach, and you've spoken here in town meetings several times about various topics and so forth. And I talked too much the last time, so I'm gonna pass to the town mayor pro temp, Mr. Smith.
Hi, sir. I've had the opportunity of meeting you before. You've come to several of my meetings. And I would just, the questions that we've asked in the past, what do you think you can help us with on the Board of Commissioners?
Government should do three things very well. Government should grind slowly. Government should grind fine. And government should never be taking power away from the people. And what we've been watching here is the exact opposite of that with the peer purchase and everything else. And there's no reason to do it. There's no reason to rush headlong into these items when they should be carefully studied, carefully looked at, dissected, and everything should be thought out. And then, the general public should be allowed a voice.
So that answers the second question. But what about the paid parking and the stormwater issues we have?
Stormwater issues are something that should be addressed. What I think that there should be is, as far as the... Well, I'll start, I'll answer your question the way that you gave it to me. The paid parking is an interesting thing. If it generates money for the town, that's fine. If it's going to be treated like piracy, where there's going to be unmarked vehicles going around issuing summonses, making a tremendous amount of people on the opposite side of the bridge, as well as people here, angry and not wanting to use the beach, then that is counterproductive. And then, as far as the stormwater management, stormwater management should be looked at, I think, as a joint project where you have to figure out where the water is going to go. And that's doubly true if we are ever all gonna put this bike lane in because you're gonna lose so much permeable soil. And what it's going to do is if the flooding is bad now, and you only, you drive by the front of my house in the next two days, it's gonna be bad. It's gonna be even worse. And that should be something that should be considered. It should be considered by the town. It should be considered because it is a state road. You know, it should be considered by the county, the state, the feds, anyone that can get, that can give us money for larger diameter pipe, runoff issues, another lifting station, whatever has to be done.
And are you still actively employed? Are you retired?
No, I've been retired since 2002.
Coming to meetings and special meetings won't be a problem?
No.
Say for me.
Let me see, who's next?
Me?
Rick touched on most of what I wanted to know. What do you think's the most crucial thing facing Holden Beach at this point in time?
Right now, we are, you've purchased a property that the people didn't want for an exorbitant amount of money with a white elephant, which is the pier. What we have to do is we have to mitigate that in the best possible way that we can for the least amount of money. I was at the Holden Beach Property Owners Meeting, and now on top of the purchase price, which I think was grossly, grossly inflated for what the properties are, what, now we're talking about another $1 million on top of that to make the pier viable for 10 years. I will say it here now as an applicant, I would say it on the other side of that, on the other side of that bench. It would make a heck of a lot more sense rather than to spend $1 million on a 50-year-old pier that's well past its service life to tear it down for $500,000. And then on top of this, with this $500,000 grant money to mortgage us, to handcuff us to that pier for the next 25 years for a measly $500,000, I think is naive at best. That's the best word I could find for that.
Let me rephrase the question. What would you like specifically to be done with the pier property that has been purchased?
I think public use is the only way to go. I mean, we've bought it. The problem is, is the parameters in which the GLC, GCL, that's the problem. If it's all supposed to be public use, okay, you can put up frisbee golf, you can make parking, but you can't charge anything for it. So where's the ROI in that? Where's the return on investment? Does this make sense? And then on top of that, there are the insurance costs of a park, of a playground, you know? The seesaws that were in every playground in our youth, regardless of where you grew up in America, are all gone. Why is that? Because a seesaw is an inherently dangerous thing. So what we have to do is we have to figure out what is the best possible use for that property for the people of this area? And then, what will be the greatest, the cheapest possible way of doing that as far as insurance and everything else, while staying in the parameters of what is public use land?
That's all I've got. Brian got your question? All right, Ms. Pat?
What are your thoughts about refining your paid parking program for 2023? We said we would do it after the end of this season. What would your thoughts be on what should be looked at and what might be considered?
Another public survey driven by the town that actually listens to the public. I also think if we have people that are... We should also ask the businesses as yet another survey, what's the best thing for them? And then we should also ask the people on the other side of the bridge because it's their beach, too. And then, what we have to figure out is we have to figure out if we have the 700 parking spaces, are the 700 enough? Were they ever really full? I don't see, I never really saw them as full. July 4th weekend, sure. If there's a thing like the festival by the sea, sure. All the other times, I would have to say based, and I'm just talking about anecdotally, not empirically, just that I think that the amount of parking that we have right now is more than enough. But I also think it should be a gentler kind of parking experience. I don't think there should be guys running around and giving you a ticket when you shouldn't be getting a ticket. I think that's crazy, and I think it's mercenary, and I think it's wrong.
I don't know of examples of people who got a ticket that it was not for illegal parking. So what kinds of citations are you speaking about that were unfair or inappropriate?
Sitting on the beach. I've said before, I'm a volunteer firefighter here. You run into people and they're like, "Oh, this parking." And they're all complaining about it. Now, granted, it's anecdotal. I'll understand it. And it might not even have happened. I understand that as well. But most of the people that I talk about, I get out of the car to walk down to the QR code. I walk back and there's a ticket on my windshield. And I mean, the stats bear that out. I really didn't come prepared to speak about that, but the police report...
You mean the 300 and some one month and 400 and some citations another month, which to me is 10 to 15 per day in high summer?
Right. Right, so, you know, 344 citations. I would have to look at this and try to figure out how many parking tickets the Holden Beach Police Department did. But it's a small, small fraction of that. I just don't think, I understand that it's a money-making ideal, but I think we should be, we're supposed to be a family beach. You know, I don't think we should, I don't think we should have a bunch of brown shirts running around giving people tickets and making people angry and ruining their day. What's the best way to ruin your day? Get a parking ticket, get a moving violation. So, other than a car accident, you know, or if you get sick or hurt. What's the, you know, this should be a good experience for everybody.
I have, are you finished? I have a question. Have you spoken with any of the residents on the east end, like Shrimp Street, Crab Street, Ferry Street, about the parking since they've instituted paid parking, about the less congestion that they have? People parking in their yards, people going in their showers? Have you spoken with any of them about how they feel about paid parking?
Only from what I've heard at the meetings.
What meetings?
These meetings, you know, where there are public speaking about parking. And then, of course, what we've...
So, but at the meetings, are you getting the same vibe from the people that live on the east end that they're opposed to the paid parking?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we have true opposition or everyone loving the parking situation. I think the parking system has to be adjusted.
Because I know several residents, because once being on the board, I've spoken with several residents in that area. And the parking situation at that end of the island has been a tremendous problem for years. And the ones that I've spoken to are appreciative of the organization. So I just wanted to make sure we had a good representation of residents.
Like I said, another survey. If I am gonna wind up on that side, what we have to do is we have to say, where's the public mandate? And then we have to ask the people. And we should be the people's mouthpiece. We should not be making choices without the people's consent.
Right, and one of the things I've found since I've become Commissioner, I'm one of the newest ones here, is surveys aren't really representation of the whole population, that you really need to get out there and talk to people and listen to the residents of the island and not really follow a survey. You really need to hear it from the horse's mouth, I think.
Well, then, that would be something that could be another special meeting, or it could be something where people could write in suggestions.
Well, a lot of us do that on our own. We just go out to various residents and kind of get a feel for it.
No, I have heard, and I've heard from the ambulance crews also, the police crews, that, you know, navigating the smaller streets is much, much easier.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. If you had to make a decision, you as a resident and taxpayer, would you be willing to raise the tax rate on Holden Beach by 3 cents and do away with public parking?
3 cents per 100?
The rate by 3 cents. To offset the income from parking.
Where did the amount of money come from before we had paid parking? Because the taxes were covering that, the taxes were covering that before. I understand we're in incredible inflationary cycle. I would have to look at that.
All right, thank you very much. You do not have to leave the room. You can sit and listen to the next person, who is...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Griffin.
Please.
Go.
You skipped a mic, mic's over.
He's on the hawthorn panel.
Oh, is he? Oh. Is he all right? Sorry.
You don't have to leave, sir.
Uh, I, I'll find you another thing to do. Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here, and, um, we're allowing you to sit at the table because it's more comfortable than standing up at the, and, um, what we'll be doing is just taking turns asking questions for about 10 minutes.
Certainly.
Appreciate your being here. We've determined the order of questions, who asks what questions when, and, um, I would just ask a, a brief question, and how long, how long have you been a resident of Holden Beach, and maybe a little bit of your background before you came here?
I've been a full-time resident of Holden Beach since 2018, um, part-time since 2017. My background is in medicine, was an emergency room doctor for 20 years. During that time, um, I, all 20 of that, those years were in leadership as medical director or regional director. Also in that interim, I worked in a trauma center, and as well as working at Trauma Center, I also worked for the Sheriff's Department for eight years on the SWAT team. Um, I was also on the position Leadership Counsel in St. Louis, I ran the largest ER in St. Louis. So I, I have leadership, uh, experience. And the reason that I'm here today is because, two reasons really. Holden Beach is special to us, and the reason we moved here is because it's a family beach, but you also have to stay contemporary. And so you can't just be the family beach and not make the changes that need to be changed. And so with those changes, decisions need to be made. And, um, I have a vested interest in it since I'm a full-time resident. And, uh, I also, I have three daughters, um, and one of my daughters is autistic, so she lives at home with us, so it's my wife and my daughter, the other two are, um, working. So they're, um, they're out of school.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith, you got some questions?
Yes, sir. What do you think you can, uh, can help us with on the Board of Commissioners? Have you thought about any insight as to, uh, what can you help us do moving forward? Do you have any thing that you can think of that we haven't done as a commission?
Well, um, it's difficult for me to answer that question because I'm not intricately familiar with all the things that you've done. I, I think that I could bring a fresh face, um, to the commissioners and, um, with some contemporary ideas. Um, I was encouraged by neighbors, um, to pursue this, um, because of my experience, my personality, they thought I would be a good fit for it. Now, granted, they're not the ones making the decision, are you guys are, and I understand that.
Yes, sir, it's, it's, sometimes it can be a tough position. But we've made some purchases in the past few years, uh, for Block Q to, um, develop and, and, and the pier. Do you have any specific issues with what we've done on that so far?
Well, um, with the pier and with, uh, with the paid parking, um, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that there were, uh, I know that there were actually questionnaires that were mailed out to residents to say rather or not, we were in favor of those, uh, you know, in favor of going forward with the parking and going forward with the, uh, purchase of the pier. And, um, I thought that the, and I may be wrong, but I thought that the consensus was that we didn't want neither, and yet we have both.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, that was, the next question was the parking, what about the, uh, the stormwater issues we have here on the island?
Well, I, I don't think you can hold the commissioners, uh, responsible for stormwater issues on the island. I, you know, I don't think that's a problem that is only for Holden Beach. So, I mean, Mother Nature's unpredictable, um, so, and I live at 175 Ocean Boulevard West, um, and we get, we get a lot of water right after torrential rainfall, but it's dry as soon as it stops raining. So I don't have really many issues with, now, when I had a house at 520 Ocean Boulevard West, and, and going there, there's some low spots that, there were some issues, but those aren't an issue for anymore because I'm just coming off the bridge and only going to 175. So aside from my experience, I can't really comment on that.
But you are retired now and living here for a while?
Yeah, the reason I'm retired is because I, in 2017, I developed a neuromuscular disease, a very rare one called Parsonage Turner Syndrome, which has affected the right side of my body, and it affects the nerves and the muscles on the upper part of my body. And so, and it's also affected my dexterity, so I'm not able to do fine motor skills. And as an emergency room physician, you have to put central lines in, you have to put chest tubes in, you have to suture people, and, uh, they don't want to see you coming in fasciculating with a big needle.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Um, I got a couple. My, my first question is the same, I'm going to ask everybody. What do you think the biggest issue is or the most important topic or concern that you have facing Holden Beach at this particular juncture in time?
I think there's growing pains. Um, so like I said, I think that, um, we just need to stay, there's a lot of people moving here, it's, and, um, I just think that it's, uh, we, uh, we need to move forward and stay contemporary with the other towns, such as Ocean Isle or Sunset Beach.
The second question is, and we as a board all have been through this very painful process of acquiring the pier property and another green space over here, Block Q, both of which are still a little bit up in the air about what the final outcome is going to be, is why we put out some RFQs. I'm interested to hear what your vision would have been had we lost those two pieces of property and had the town not purchased them for preservation for everybody to, to use, because a lot of people use them. And the paid parking was the only way we could generate revenue outside of raising taxes to fund them. So I'm interested to hear what you would have liked to have seen there if they were gone. What would we have done as a town if we had lost those two pieces of property? And we had 190-ish parking spaces.
But are we talking about the parking, parking space as well, or just, so, but, the parking or the, the pier, um, what's, what's the expected life, life longevity of that pier, even with the modifications that we do to it? Is it, is it a, is it something that's worth pursuing? I mean, are we going to get the money out of it that we're putting into it? That would be my question.
Well, we've put that out there to the higher-ups, but it's the property more so than what's on the property that we were trying to preserve. And I live here, and every time I drive by that particular piece of property, actually both of them for the most part, I see people taking for granted what we fought so hard to preserve. So I, we didn't want to do the paid parking, but unfortunately, without putting the burden on our residents here, that was the only option to fund it. So I'm interested to see from the people that didn't want it, what they did want to see there, or they did want the town to do to preserve, preserve properties for people to come and enjoy.
Well...
So if you had, I mean, did you have, there would have been houses built there or something, that would have been the only other, you know, unless a private, um, person would have bought it, but I just, we want support in what we've put in place is, is what I'm trying to say, and...
Well, I, I think that anytime we can keep space available for the people to use, and it's not privately owned, that's a good thing. But, uh, if you, even if you took down the pier, couldn't there just have been more public beach there?
It would, taking down the pier is certainly an option, and, but the, the 350-foot of property would not have been there had we not pulled the trigger on it, so...
Why would the property not have been there?
Because it wasn't owned by the town, it was owned by a private individual that was up for sale, and it would have been bought by...
Okay, so the, the town, the town buys the property and bought the property?
Correct.
But, uh, and so we do have the property now?
Now we do, but the battle is to fund it and to keep paying for it, so...
Pat, you should come over here to tell them all. I think we need to let Pat come.
I'm good, Pat, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Every year we set objectives, and, I mean, we've, we've had very similar objectives the last couple of years in terms of our prioritizing, what it is we need to do. Um, are there any things that you think that we've missed that you might propose if you're on this board in the upcoming budget and objective setting for fiscal year 23, 24? Do you have something that you're thinking that the town needs that you want to propose as a priority objective?
Offhand, I can't think of anything, I'll be honest with you. I can't think of anything right now, just, if I was prepared for the question maybe, but just off the cuff.
When you said, you know, staying contemporary with other islands to you is important, what, what do you mean by staying contemporary with the other islands?
Just making it, um, making it as, um, attractive, and not, not physically attractive because Holden Beach is certainly beautiful. I, you know, I love it. But, um, you know, maybe pursuing more restaurants or, uh, bars or things like that that we might be able to open up for more of the young people to utilize.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay and listen to the others.
I have to go somewhere, but thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your interest. Thanks for choosing Holden Beach as your home.
Absolutely, that, that's weird.
Hello, Mr. Luke, have a seat at the table, sir, and stick into the microphone, we got some questions for you.
Sounds good.
Obviously, you live here at Holden Beach?
Yes, sir. I became a resident in 2004.
Okay, and, um, each of the commissioners is going to have a question for you, and Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Yeah, well, Luke, I've, I've known you for quite a few years now, and, uh, my question is, what can you contribute to the Board of Commissioners at this particular time? You know, replacing Gerald Brown, what would you think your contribution would be to us?
No offense to anybody on the board, but I'm quite a bit younger than you guys. That is not meant to be offensive in any way. It is just simply to say that I can provide a young, fresh, probably, I think about it, I'm, I'm a fresh set of eyes. I am the future of this beach. I have been here since 2004. I've spent the majority of my life here. I want to know where this is going in the future because I don't plan on living anywhere else.
All right, Luke, what, what do you think of our, in the past year or so, we've bought, we've purchased property for the town of Holden Beach Block Q and the pier, and also implemented paid parking, what's your feelings on that?
I think that, uh, the town is making good progress trying to, um, reach out to different areas because, uh, as residents, we're not the only people who enjoy the beach. I think that it's very nice that, uh, people who can't afford to live on the beach are able to come from other parts of the island to enjoy it. Um, I think that you guys have gone very, very thoughtfully about how you guys have done it, um, checking for CAMA permits. Uh, the methods by which you guys have done it, it's, uh, it's very clear that you guys have, have paid great attention to making sure it's done right. Um, while I know it wasn't quite as successful as we had hoped, we didn't get as many spots, um, the fact that we showed an effort and did it right means more than anything else.
Thank you. Now, it's, I've asked everybody else if they're retired, and I know you're not, but are you still going to school and, uh, are you going to plan to stay in the area and go? Or are you going to, what's your future plans for staying here at Holden Beach, Luke?
Yes, sir, so I'm a graduate of NC State. However, I am currently continuing online courses. Uh, I work all throughout North Carolina. I, I do medical device sales. I've owned my own company since 2018, and I don't plan on retiring anytime soon. I wish I could, but, uh, you know, I'm young and motivated, and, uh, I'm, I'm healthy in the workforce. I don't plan on removing myself from there. Um, I don't plan on, on moving away from Holden Beach anytime soon, um, and I definitely don't, uh, plan on revoking my, uh...
Thank you for your time, you're excellent.
Of course.
I'll give mine, Pat?
Nope.
Um, what would be, if you had to set a goal for the town and something you'd like to see in the next, um, near, the near future for the, for the town of Holden Beach, what would it be? What do you think we need, what do you think we need to focus on and accomplish? And basically, what's your priorities if you were to sit up here as a board member? What would you, do you have an agenda? Do you have things that are important to you? Do you have stuff that you want to see done?
Absolutely. Infrastructure. I think more than anything, we need to make sure that, uh, we keep the island where it's at. Uh, it's, it's just a matter of, uh, making sure that we keep up with roadways, bulkheads, pretty much anything that is important to keeping the sand where it's at, keeping the water where it's at. Um, you know, there's a couple of things that we've looked into, you know, terminal groynes, um, and I think that, uh, it would be nice to, to possibly explore other things. There are devices called PEMs, pressure equalizing modules that go into the sand to, to help equalize the, the pressure within sand to keep it from eroding. And, you know, I know that we spent a lot of money doing the beach reclamation, but I've watched most of it erode here within the past two weeks, and I, I really would like to see the beach stay. So if, if I would, uh, if I, if I were elected to the board, I would definitely make sure that the beach will be there for my kids and their kids and pretty much everybody else after us.
Definitely number one on the list. But thank you for coming out and, uh, and being willing to even consider sitting up here, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Doctor?
Uh, so one of the things we talked about was the, the hotbed of parking. Obviously, it's been a, a, a major issue, and we talked about getting it started and then refining it. What do you, what are your, some of your visions for refining the parking situation?
Um, have you found any more land space?
Uh, that's one of the things we're talking about, the vision areas, what to do with some of the properties we have, whether we're going to increase parking or leave it the same, or, you know, that's one of the things that's the, the hotbed of the discussion is, we got it implemented to get it organized, and now we want to pursue refining it. Do you have any visions for, help it, you know, what, what you should see, what our next step is with that?
So unfortunately, it's unsightly, but, uh, in the city, they've learned to go up. So space is always available above, but you can't create any more landmass if it's not available. So possibly look into parking decks, especially at the pier. It's, it's not too far... It's not too far out of reach. They can go up overnight. So, and, you know, long-term, I don't know if it would pay itself off, but it would be something that we could venture into. We could possibly find a way to make it look more appealing, throw beach shades on it, you know, the thatch-style shades to try and make it more appealing. But unfortunately, they're not making any more beach unless we find a way to reclaim the sand. And CAMA has obviously shut us down on all the parking permits, so.
Ms. Pat?
I actually think that everything that I have as questions have already been asked.
Really?
Yes.
We've got a couple more minutes, I believe. If you had a ability to change Holden Beach in any way, what would you change?
To be honest with you, I never considered it because this is my home. So there's really not much you want to change about home. But if I would say, it may seem odd, but Holden Beach has many homes that are vacant during the winter because there aren't full-time residents here. And I can understand the principle behind not wanting to influence a vote because there is, you don't want to influence a vote through amassing money and buying properties and then buying a house here and saying, now I get to vote there, and buy a house here and say, I get to vote here. But Holden Beach being a vacation destination and a lot of the houses being rented out, if I could say anything, I would almost say that it would be worthwhile to consider allowing property owners to vote and not necessarily residents. Because it's not to say that they don't enjoy the beach just as much as we do and that their renters don't enjoy the beach just as much as we do. But it would be nice to be able to see the people who actually have a stake in the property have a stake in what happens to the property around them that is owned by the town.
All right. Time better. One more minute. You have anything else? If not, thank you very much, sir. You're welcome to stay and listen to your friendly competitors here answer their questions.
I appreciate that, but I've got to get back to Hurricane problem. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Hello, sir.
Hey, guys.
Welcome to have us seat at the table and speak into the microphone. We thank you very much for being here.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Each one of the commissioners and I will ask you some varying questions, and we're going to spend about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Sharing information back and forth. Again, thank you for being here. And if you will take a minute and just tell us a little bit how you arrived here and a little bit of background.
Great. My name's Rick McInturk, 122th Frigate. I was actually born in Ohio. And my family died in the wool of Ohio State Buckeye fans. So I sort of broke the mold when I announced I was coming south to go to college. Came to a small Christian liberal arts college just outside Johnson City called Milligan College, elementary education and physical education. Transferred straight to a master's program at East Tennessee State University, master's degree in the teaching of reading. Went to work then and went back to ETSU some years later and earned a doctorate in educational leadership and policy analysis. My career spans 46 years, all in the public sector, all in education. Everything from elementary school guidance counselor to supervisor positions, elementary principal, federal projects director, associate superintendent and superintendent schools for the last seven years in Ozark, Alabama. During those times, I had the opportunity to manage quite a few pots of money, lots of budgets, most obviously the general fund budget for the school system, working with the school board on that. On the federal side, I had Title I, Title II, Title VI, all funds that were designed, federal funds, designed to level the playing field somewhat between the haves and the have-nots as far as school systems go. The measuring stick on that was number of kids eligible for free lunch. And my, 74% of my kids were eligible for free lunch. So I was a have-not, which resulted in a lot of federal dollars coming into the system. Special education, transportation, more recently COVID funds, construction bonds for new construction and renovations. While I was in Ozark, we built a new high school and I renovated every other building in the school system. Worked with a lot of committees over those years, obviously the school board. Worked with the Board of Control for the United Way Organization for Southeast Alabama, Rotary Organization, a lot of allocation committees there, and of course, federal advisory boards and things like that. I have worked quite a bit with our city commission. We collaborated a lot on projects between the city and county. If you were to contact some of my coworkers, I hope they would tell you I'm honest, I'm consistent, hopefully I'm hardworking, and probably most important, I'm pretty conservative with the public's money. So one other point I guess I'd like to make is I am well aware that you're holding applications from some really good people that have lived on this island for a longer period than I have. I can assure you of this, that should I get appointed to this seat, I will review items that come in front of the board. I'll seek input whenever necessary, and my votes would always reflect what I feel would be best for the residents and property owners of Holden Beach. Questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Well, that kind of, you answered my first question once you contributed to the Board of Commissioners, but let's go and skip to the next ones. What do you think our board has, we thought long and hard and worked out that we could actually purchase the property at the pier for preservation of property as well as Block Q for the town of Holden Beach, which also had some implications for the paid parking. But that wasn't the sole reason for the paid parking. We had to get it under control.
Sure.
Somehow. What are your thoughts on those three things?
As I was watching all that develop, I supported the city's purchase of the pier. I think it's an important piece of property for the city to own. Not so much that it's ever going to be a big moneymaker or anything like that, but when it's open again to the public, there are not many families that would visit this beach that sometime during the week that they stay here, they're going to walk out on that pier, they're going to turn around, let the wind blow in their face, try to point out their house somewhere along the shore. I did it for 30 years. I know what people do. So I supported that purchase. I think it's important for the draw to the island, so to speak. Block Q, I'm really anxious to see the engineering plans, the plans for that. I was here over the controversy of closing Carolina Avenue and all of that. I really think a good developed site plan could incorporate that property into the thoroughfare that the public wants, but still make that property useful to the public. It's going to have some parking with it, you know, but I look at some of the state parks that I've been to in Florida. There's parking, there's restrooms, there's bathhouses, there are picnic tables, shelter, a multi-purpose kind of facility. I'd love to see something like that. So, yeah, I think both properties are important.
Thanks, Errol. The only, the last question, are you quite a bit experienced in the education field? Are you still actively working or are you now retired and here full-time?
No, I'm fully retired. I'm here full-time. My email is still connected to the school system. They, once it blew me in, they send me a question, but I'm fully retired and here. So, you know, as, when you begin deliberating this question and you say, why, why consider, Rick? I think I have the time, I have the interest, I think I have the energy, and I think some of my training and experience over the years is going to align fairly nicely with some of the duties required of Commissioner Holden Beach.
Thank you, Rick.
Rick, first off, thanks for your interest in the board. What do you think is the biggest problem facing the town of Holden Beach? Or the biggest item that we need to focus on in the near future?
I had that question all prepared until last month's meeting. I know you're working hard on the pier property. I know you're working hard on Block Q. When the discussions came along of wastewater management and stormwater drainage, those are pretty important items, I think, to be out there to consider. I know you're always concerned about parks and recreation. We have a great Parks and Recreation Board that is functioning fully. I read in some of their minutes that they're considering a kayak launch at Sailfish Park. I'd support that. What I would support in addition to it would be some way to get from the level of the water to the level of the park. That's hard to do for an old man like me. Climbing up that wall or putting your feet on the boats, I'd support a ladder, a ramp or something like that to go with that kayak launch at Sailfish Park. So those kinds of things, always looking for ways to enhance and improve the Parks and Recreation side of the park. And then the safety issues, of course, we're all aware of all the safety issues that y'all are taking up a lot.
Thank you.
Doctor, go ahead.
Do you have any ideas on possible opportunities to increase our revenue streams? I mean, we've been through this year in, year out. We've had workshops on it and everything. With all the things going on in properties that need to be renovated, infrastructure that needs to be upgraded or put in, revenue streams are important. Any ideas?
I, some maybe. I was here the night you talked about the pumping station right here that it needed to be raised, that we're having trouble on the east end with flow of liquids and things like that. I come from a world primarily that operates by allocation. So proposing and developing revenue other than grants, I do have quite a bit of grant writing in my, in my history. And I know that you have received some grants in recent years and things like that. So that's certainly one aspect for increasing revenue. I know as residents, we will pay for sewer upgrades and things like that. The parking revenue, my gosh, we, $350,000 or something like that after expenses first year. That's got to be monitored and looked at for the best way to use those funds over the course of time.
What were your thoughts, if you have any? What are your thoughts about refining the paid parking program going into 2023? We did tell the public and we told ourselves that after the year's over, we need to sit down, take a look and tweak.
I'm glad you made that statement because that's in my mind, too. At some point, there has to be a review of that. We've been in operation for a season now, so now we can look at it and see what tweaks are necessary. The only suggestion I might have would be how residents fit into that picture. There aren't many times that a resident would drive, I don't think, to a paid parking location to go to the beach. But maybe it happens sometimes, and maybe there's a way to almost waive that parking fee for residents that are paying taxes in another way in order to ease that. Some of the things that are being said about paid parking, we've got to have paid parking. I mean, it was a self-defense move. I get that. It was going on everywhere. So that might be one suggestion that I might throw out in time. Drive it off the storm stickers, if nothing else.
Anybody else got a question?
Sure. Since some of the issues that we've been dealing with, with the paid parking, is a lot of misconception is that we purchased the pier and Block Q to make it all parking lots. But one of the big things is ADA compliance, bathrooms, things like that. And some of our ideas is to make planning according to that. What do you see as a vision for what our, especially Block Q could bring to that, helping us get up to that?
Well, like I said, I've been to some big areas at oceans, golfs, that are Block Q-ish kind of looking, and they incorporate lots of services into them. And I'd like to see more than a big paved rectangle sitting out there, some other services for the city, maybe. As far as, what was the first part of that question?
Some misconceptions were that we purchased those properties just for parking.
Yeah, the ADA compliance issue, that's important. I come from that world. I went and looked at the bathrooms down here at the bridge the other day. I looked at them about 20 years ago, too. And they're not.
They still look the same.
They look the same. They're not horrible, horrible, but they're not in compliance. And that's why I'd like to see built into that site plan, really quality restrooms and bathhouses and outside showers and things like that as a part of the Block Q plan. Yeah, ADA compliance, parking compliance, we're going to have to give some thought to parking at the pier when it reopens to the public. I don't, maybe the hour thing might work if you wanted to take a stroll on the pier, but there's got to be some consideration given to that, I think.
Anybody else? Time about gone. We greatly appreciate your time and energy, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Ms. Tate? You're welcome to stay and listen.
He's been lonely for a while there.
Welcome, Ms. Tate. If you will, microphone at the table, more comfortable than standing up at the podium. And thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Sharing your time with us. Each commissioner is going to ask you some questions. We're going to spend about 10 minutes back and forth. I'd first ask, just give us a quick summary of your past, present, possible future plans of Holden Beach.
Okay. Well, my family's owned a house at Holden Beach since 1968. I think we're the second house oldest. It's debatable. There was a debate going around on Facebook the other day, which one's the oldest. But anyway, we've been.
I would just tell you, it's a few decades later.
Okay. Well, I don't know, we understood it was beyond the late 40s. But anyway, when Hurricane Hazel came through, it picked it up and moved it over to the waterway, we were told, and they moved it back, moved back on the foundation. So it's been there ever since, so it's been there a long time. But anyway, my in-laws bought the house, like I said, back in 68, some other properties. So my first, my first visit to Holden Beach was in 92. My husband and I got married in 92, and I was, we've been sort of a part-time resident for a number of years. But back in 2016, I started working with Century 21 as a real estate agent. And so to have a stronger presence here, I'm a permanent resident here since 2016. And I'm a registered voter here in Brunswick County. Background-wise, I have an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in organizational leadership and management. And most of my work experience has been in either economic development, community development aspects. I worked with two entities, very similar to Cape Fear Council of Governments. I know you're familiar with that entity, but I worked with Lumber River Council of Governments, which did Robinson, Hoagland, and Scotland Counties. And I also worked with Isothermal Planting and Development Commission, which is the same type of entity, but in a different region. So I worked very closely with local, state, and federal governmental entities when I was in those positions. My last job before I became a real estate agent was I worked at the University of North Carolina Pembroke, and I was the director for a regional center for economic, community, and professional development. and professional development. And in that position, I worked a lot with local governments, state government, and federal government levels, and did a lot of activities that were related to planning and community development, economic development, those types of aspects. I did a lot of grant writing, brought a lot of resources into the counties there, and oversaw and managed those types of grants. I am currently a broker with...real estate agent with Proactive Real Estate, and I focus pretty much on Brunswick County. And I currently serve on Holden Beach as a planning and zoning board, been on that little over a year, so been active in those activities. So that's a little bit about my background.
All right. Mayor Proton Smith?
Yes, ma'am. I've read through your qualifications, you're at that, that's been here and active at Holden Beach a long time. What do you think you contribute to the Board of Commissioners if you move into this position right now?
Well, I feel like with my background, having worked with a number of local government entities, I'll be honest with you, I'm not...I do not know that you're the local representative or senator for this area, but I do know some from some other counties and personally friends with those. So I think it would be access through them to get to know them. I think it's important for advocacy, to be able to advocate to your legislative folks, you know, what your priorities are for your particular area, because if they don't know what you want and what you need, then they're not gonna be there advocating for you. So I think I bring some good qualifications, I think, in that area. I have an overall understanding of planning and strategic development and, you know, doing long-range planning, those kinds of things, while I know that the board doesn't do the day-to-day. But that, you have to be able to have the vision to communicate that, I think, to the staff to move that along. I think you've got a lot of projects currently at the table, and that's an understatement. And I think a lot of them have got to begin moving, and I think with my background in that area, I could help with some of that.
Well, that's a pretty good segue into my second question. As far as our purchases of the Block Q and the pier property and implementing paid parking, what are your thoughts on those subjects?
I don't have a problem with paid parking. I think the folks that visit the island should help pay for the resources. I don't think it should all go on the backs of the property owners. I think I don't have a problem with that. I guess I thought we moved maybe a little bit faster than maybe what I thought maybe we should have, but we've done it, and so I think you have to live with it. But I don't have a problem with paid parking, and I pay to go to park almost anywhere else I go. So I don't have a problem with it, is I think there's been some issues and maybe some concerns from some folks and complaints or whatever, and maybe they were just complaints, I don't know, but it might be some things that you could look at to make it better for next summer. I don't know, but I don't have a problem with paid parking. As far as the pier, I support the pier. Pier's been here for a long time. I'm anxious to see what's gonna happen with it and, you know, see that it's gonna move along, and I know it's gonna take some time, and I know you've got the RFQs out and got... I'm a kitchen engineer, hopefully, give some strategies on doing that. So I'm anxious, I would be anxious to be involved in that process to move those projects along as well as Q, because I know we've got to do something over here with the boat ramp and all the issues that are associated with that.
Thank you, ma'am. I do, the retired parts, you're still active, be working for Proactive. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Ryan? Every year, as you know, the board...first off, I'd like to thank you for even considering coming and sitting up here with us. But every year, the board creates a list of objectives and prioritizes those objectives, and 90% of the time, the top obviously is advocacy, and then it goes from...it's kind of a common sense icing on the cake, so to speak. What objectives outside of what we currently have, obviously, the big projects that we've all talked about, paid parking, the pier, Block Q, and the stormwater and that type of thing? What else do you think that Holden Beach needs to consider in the near future to add to that?
To add to the ones that you've already identified?
Have we covered our bases, or are we lacking in considering?
I think you've got a lot out there currently on the table. I mean, between the stormwater, I mean, something else that definitely needs to be done about that. I was excited at the last meeting when that was approved to move that one along and begin working on that, because there are, obviously, are some issues with that. But I think, you know, to go along with, it's on your objective list, but your restrooms have got to have some, you know, attention to those, both at the pier and, I think, I think there's some talk about putting it over at Block Q, but I think if you're gonna have the parking, you have to have some services that go along with that, if you will, and people are a little bit more amenable, I think, to do that. I think what I hear a lot is some more recreational kind of things for younger folks, and I don't know what that could be, I would have to strategize and think about that, but that's one of the things I hear. I mean, I know there's a parking committee, but I do hear that from a lot of people, because I've worked with a lot of people that, you know, are purchasing property here, and they talk about what are the activities for our children to be, and that seems to be one that comes up, you know, what could be done about that, and if I'm be a possibility that's not on your plate already.
That's all, ma'am. Doc?
Good morning, Doc.
Ms. Tate?
As you say, we have a lot on our plate, and if you attended the last couple of years of budget, you can see how fine a line we're walking in terms of incomings and outgoing's, and things are tight. Do you have any ideas of improving revenue streams for the town?
Well, you know, the unpopular one is always to raise taxes, which none of us like to do, but I guess we're gonna be going into revaluation before too long, so that might be an opportunity to take some look at that. I don't know. I mean, I know nobody wants to raise the taxes, that's always the way. I know you're getting some revenue, it sounded like from the last meeting, you have some pretty good revenue from the parking, but then I know that it's gonna be used to offset, you know, the cost for the...some of the costs, I think, for the pier, but absent tax increase, I'm not thinking...this is coming to my mind at this moment in time off the cuff, I'd have to give that a little bit more thought.
You talked about, you know, supporting paid parking and everything. We did discuss that at the end of the first season, we were gonna be doing, you know, some in-depth analysis and do some tweaking. Do you have any thoughts off the top of your head about directions that we might take for refining the program?
I think maybe not going much to the end of October, and I know that's gonna cut into revenue, but, you know, I mean, it dropped, I mean, it did this year, I mean, the year before it didn't, but the population that's on the island currently has dropped considerably, and it did it pretty quickly, it seemed like. And so, I don't know, there's not...when I've been down, especially down by the pier, I go by there more often than I do down on the East End, it doesn't seem as many people are parking there anyway, but there's a lot of people that would like to, but they don't wanna go and have to pay.
Okay.
Anybody got any other questions? Doc? Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, just to conclude, that, you know, I do have a strong interest in sorting on the board, and, you know, I'd like to work to preserve the past, but realize that there's change, and there's inevitable in to be involved in that process as well.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
We've got some other interviews coming. You're welcome to sit at the table, sir, and speak into the microphone. Each one of us is gonna ask you some questions for about 10 minutes.
Okay.
First question is, just a quick summary of your background and...
I'm 52 years old, born in Wilmington, raised along the coast, moved away and couldn't wait till I moved back, and now I'm here.
Got here quick as you could?
Got here...yeah, as quick as I could, anyway. Not as quick as I wanted, but quick as I could. We, growing up in Wilmington, we'd always travel through to Myrtle Beach, and so didn't visit at 18 years old, I'd just see how fast I could go through Charlotte without getting a ticket. So I didn't make a lot of stops along the beaches along the way, 'cause, you know, Holden didn't have any lights or rides, so we'd always go down there. And so what I bypassed as an 18-year-old, as a 52-year-old, I enjoy. And so, and plus, with having smaller kids, keeps them out of the trouble that I got into. Anyway, so that's how I got to Holden. We picked this place because of the amenities, the canals primarily, and close access to the beach, and so my wife said, "Are you sure you want a beach house?" And I said, "Absolutely." And we started looking, and she said, "Well, do you wanna put the boat in the backyard?" And my first thing come to mind was Flipper. And I'm like, "Man, that would be kinda cool, just to go out to your backyard and just get in the boat and take off." And so that was, that's what we were able to do, and so we were very blessed and fortunate to be able to do that. And we...I'll be quite honest, I didn't really realize what a jewel this place was, to be quite honest with you. Because like I said, as a kid, we just didn't visit much, because we were closer to Carolina Beach and Curie Beach, and so...but, you know, we've loved it ever since. Matter of fact, we looked at the house, put the offer on the house, and then I told my wife, I said, "You might wanna bring the kids and see if you like the beach," and so she fell in love with it, though, so that's how we got to Holden, and that's why we're here.
Mayor Proton Smith?
Well, Keys, I've had the pleasure of meeting you on several occasions. In fact, my picture's been in the paper. My name has been in the paper with your picture, vice versa, but...
Yes, I'm not quite sure how that works.
Have you been shot at, man?
That was awesome, Ray, sir. However...
That was a unique experience.
Thank you for contributing to the Board of Commissioners right now.
Right now? You know, I could give a grid, you know, I could probably list a ton of things, like Block Q and Pier, and stuff that I'm passionate about, and bike lanes, and storm drainage, and fiscal responsibility, and sewer systems, and, you know, all of that stuff. But the opportunity to be a part of the fabric of America, like to sit on the board and to represent the people that I live next to, it's really...I think...I think the idea or my goal would be to come alongside and help with the research, picking options, and so that when we make decisions, that we're not...that we know as much as we can. And so spending the time to research behind the scenes, finding out what public opinion is, just, you know, through just local networks and stuff, and knowing who I can listen to and who I shouldn't listen to, and just learning that whole process. But just the fact of getting to serve the community, I think that would be my highlight. So a sense of pride would be one thing that I would bring. A sense of service would be another thing I would bring. And then, you know, in high school, and my educational experience was not the best times of my life. But since then, I've become very studious of anything I've done, and so I really find enjoyment in that now, like seeking different options and different ways to work together to get things done. So whether it be, you know, working with engineers, or whether it be doing inspections, or whether it be, you know, studying spreadsheets for, you know, hours, pun of hours, you know, those are the type of things that I'm kinda into now.
Thank you, Keys. I know kinda where you stand on the pier. You did a survey, was very informative. What about Block Q and parking?
Quick comment about Pier. My assumption was it was never a decision. It was my assumption y'all had already decided to do this. It was just more of a process. Personally, mayor, this is whether I'm on it or not, I understand the ethics part of it, but if you run a business and you sell property, it seemed like you could stay and sell the property, no matter what your position. But I understand ethics, and I get all that kind of stuff. I also understand from Mr. Bass that you quickly exited, and people talked about it for months, and I disagree with that, but sometimes it's just pointless to say it over and over. And so all I could tell is that every time it came up, you stepped away from it. So my objective on the pier was to move past, and when we're going for grants. Even though the people of Holden Beach are responsible for it, they're not the ones that's gonna pay for it. The tourists are gonna pay for it. The people that fish, the 330, 350 fishermen that had annual passes, they're the one paying for the pier. So my concept on the whole survey thing, it was never about them being Holden Beach residents. It was about when we moved to that next step, and you go to whoever we need to go to to get the grant. Not only do we have support from local, we also have support from Jacksonville, North Carolina, Rockingham, North Carolina, Asheville, North Carolina, Columbus, Ohio, Atlanta, Georgia, even one town in California. So that survey was never to represent the people of Holden Beach. It was to look past that and go, "Hey, once that's done and we're gonna go request funding, who's using the pier? Who actually comes there and is spending money?" $117 on average is when someone comes from out of state. That's what they're spending to come to that pier, on average, and they come 33 times a year. And so that's where that lead led to. As far as Block Q goes, I think we look at the highest and best use. You would look outside of, you know, what do we need? And I know the, kind of, the thought process was in the ethos, even though y'all have never said it, is it's gonna be another parking. And if that's the highest and best use for the property, then put parking on there. I think you have some people look at different communities and say, "Hey, what can we put there?" You know, I heard parking deck, a six-story parking deck. I don't know, is that highest and best use? Then whatever that is, then make a decision on that. Or maybe they come back and they say, "Yeah, a six-story parking deck is the highest and best use for that property, but that doesn't fit into the family beach." So then you have to, you can't just take what the engineer says or the architect says, you have to blend it into your community and, you know, what works best here. Because what works best here, you know, Myrtle Beach has a four-story parking deck right by where the pavilion used to be. That made sense for them, because they were trying to get people there in and out. I mean, I live near the pier. I mean, I can't speak for the whole island, but I've not seen parking be an issue this year, maybe in certain spots or whatever, but, I mean, everybody said, you know, you put paid parking and nobody's gonna come, or it's gonna get flooded, actually, what they kept saying. You know, we're not gonna be able to handle everybody. I'm like, that's not the way paid parking works, I think. I don't think you put paid parking and you have more people come in. I think it just managed what the traffic flow we had. And I, you know, the parking attendants seem like that they take care of their nice, everybody I've seen, as far as they did things, they took care of what they needed to do. I think that's been a good thing, you know, brought in, almost $400,000, I think, so which is, I think, a little bit under projections, but first year and had some expenses. So as far as Block Q, if it, I think first you determine what's the highest and best use for it, and then does that blend with what the goal of the city is, the town?
Thank you, Keys. I'm listening to the Board of Commissioners talking.
My only question is, I've asked this to everybody. Again, first off, thank you for coming out, thank you for the great work you did in that period of time we were tied up with the pier purchase. With that being said, we set objectives every year, each and every year, we all come up with our own ideas, one by one, put them in a pile, tally them up, and collectively decide what's the most important to do and what's the least important to do. So if you were sitting up here now and you had to do those same objectives, do you have any ideas to what those would be?
Well, it's a unique position, because you're coming in part of a term. And so I think it would be a mistake, or maybe pretentious, to come in and go, "Hey, I've got these 14 brand-new ideas," when you guys have already voted and scored different things that you wanna do. And so the first thing I would do is look at all of those things and really come alongside and go, "Okay, what's next on the list? Let's see what we can do." Start researching, see what the best options for that is. I mean, obviously, you know, the pier is top of mind for everybody, Block Q's top of mind, the bathroom underneath the bridge is top of mind, and I have opinions on all of those. I never, I mean, some people said, "Well, I think that you're in favor of..." No, I'm adamantly 1,000% in favor of developing the pier. But if it costs $17 million, I'm not in favor of that anymore. We need to see something else. So I have strong beliefs about certain things, but I think the role of the person that steps in here is really to come inside and let's move y'all forward where you've already started.
Thank you. Doc, do you got any questions, Commissioner?
Anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay and listen, we've got...oh, that's it, isn't it?
That's it.
All right. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board here? Do you want to...
Ballot votes.
Hmm?
Ballot votes.
Ballot votes. Ballot votes? All right. Madam Clerk, you passed out ballots, is that right?
Yes, sir. If you vote by ballot, please make sure you sign your name, please.
Congratulations, Judge. Thank all the rest for the participation. And what's a pleasure to swear in at the next meeting, if they want to run that?
I just want to say I appreciate all the enthusiasm this evening. It shows that there are people that really truly love this place. We are, we'll be losing some members and have an election coming up in another year or so, so please don't, don't give up. We really appreciate all that y'all guys do for us. And gals.
All right, again, thanks, everyone. And we're on item number four, Corps of Engineers Coastal Storm Risk Management. Mr. Hoot, do you want to address that or Christie or...
Yes, sir. So at the meeting last Tuesday night, Colonel Bennett gave you guys an update on the duration, scope, and cost, and also a potential funding option with DRA funding. This is funding we pursued earlier in 2019 post-Florence. And they have, the Wilmington District has supplied a letter, which is Attachment One...
Judge, judge, oh, judge. Hold on a second. I, I need, excuse me for stopping this. I just want to ask the commissioner one question. Will this hurricane potentially come our way or go the other way? Before the judge leaves, I know you weren't leaving. All right, I won't keep you just a second. Whether, whether, I guess the clerk can swear him in, but I would like permission for the commissioners, if we don't swear him in tonight, let him attend our functions so that he will have experience going through the hurricane process. Does that make sense? Okay. So we'll contact you whenever, if we have any commissioner meetings relative to anything that goes on that, if you can observe.
I hope not.
All right, I'm sorry. I thought you were leaving. All right, back to you, Christie.
Okay. So at Attachment One is the letter that the Corps sent and is their preferred choice. They're saying that District Headquarters wants to see full acknowledgement of the additional time and cost. Since our meeting, the staff coordinated with our representatives at Warden Smith, our advocacy group, and they recommended Attachment Two, which was sent to the Corps, but they, again, want their letter of one there. There's also attachments in your packet for the cost breakdown that you guys asked for. And other than those items, I would say that when the Corps sent back that Attachment One is the preferred choice and what they would look for from the board, from the letter of intent, we did have an additional discussion with Warden Smith, and there were some things that they wanted us to relay. One is that the appropriation could come from the federal government before the DRA request is approved. There is always that chance that the federal government budget would be passed beforehand. Also, they wanted to put forward that the first time in 2019, when the town was trying to go after the DRA funding, that they were instrumental in the ones that got the language written in about the 100% when it goes to 100% federal cost share. So they thought that if the town does decide to pursue a letter of intent, that they could be quite helpful in any advocacy efforts where that goes. And lastly, they did say that you guys aren't precluded from sending a second letter. So if you decide to go with Letter One, that doesn't mean that you can't send a letter just so that when we go to headquarters that you couldn't send a letter to the Wilmington District that further outlines what you expect in the future in terms of your relationship, partnership with the Corps.
You got anything to add, Mr. Hoot? Commissioners, what would you like to move forward? What do you need, Christie, from the commissioners?
If the commissioners would like to pursue the Disaster Relief Act funding for 2019, the Wilmington District is saying that they need an approved letter of intent from the board. So you guys would need to approve a letter, and they have rejected our counter at Attachment Two, so they're actually looking for the very first letter. They're asking for you guys to make a motion to pass the first letter there in the, in the packet.
This in no way obligates us to provide them any of the second-year funding until we understand whether or not we're getting this money, correct?
Yes, that's what I understood, Pat.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for that or just a consensus? I'd like to make a motion that we...
Do you have anything as a turn it?
I'd like to make a motion that we supply them with the Corps of Engineers with a letter of intent to continue the project in hopes to be able to receive some additional funding.
Second.
And just for clarification, that is the letter of intent at Attachment One that the Corps says they need that's in your packet?
Yes.
Any discussion here, now in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no, unanimous. Madam Clerk? Number five, discussing possible action statements or qualifications for Block Q and the Pier. Ms. Ferguson, anyone else you got any comments about that?
You want our rankings?
If the board was going to make their, I could do another tally if that's...
All right. Do we need to sign these, Heather?
Yes, please.
Something flat. Now, we scored the three, one to three, and then the four, one, two, four, correct? Maybe?
I wrote my preferred and second preferred. I ranked it, I did it so that it's described, okay?
Okay.
As a matter of clarification, and I know that I sent that scorecard out subsequent, when you say you scored them from one to three, I'm not sure that we clarified if one was the best or three was the best.
I wrote on mine, one is preferred. I wrote on mine, one is preferred, so, yeah.
Now, wait a minute. I thought the highest score was winning.
My point exactly.
So if everybody just writes their preferred on there with that word? These guys wrote their preferred on there with that word.
Yeah. So however, however y'all want to do it, I just want to point out, we did not determine that in the board meeting when I sent it out. I didn't clarify it. I just put, you know, made a suggestion from one to three, but we didn't say one was the best or three was the best. And y'all should probably, before scoring it, make sure that it's clear amongst the board members. If one is the best or three is the best.
The second preferred is what I did on mine.
So number one is the best and number four is the worst?
Yeah, and low score wins.
Got it. Do you have a blank?
I have a blank.
Hold on a minute, I'm going to have to fix my, I guess I was the dumb, I mean, the one that didn't understand in the group.
Well, he, she's got this in mind.
How about you put a star by your preferred two?
It took me a minute to, don't feel bad. I guess I should have called. There you go, sir.
Okay, the board has selected for Block Q, Pinnacle, and for the Pier bonus. All right.
Commissioner Town Manager, is, well, what is the, now that we have chosen them to keep this moving forward, what do we need to do? What is, what would be our next move?
A proposal needs to come from each one of those firms, contract terms certain for the board to approve or evaluate and possibly approve to move forward. She's going to have to end there into a contractual agreement with each one of those.
And you'll notify them and the next steps will happen.
If by consensus of the board, I'm assuming that's what you want done.
So do we need to make a motion to move forward with contacting the two ones that we've chosen to give us on the...
That would be appropriate, to do it that way. Well, we need to talk about the timeframe.
Agenda package, technically, the information is due by next Friday, so I'm not sure if the firms will have enough time to prepare their proposed contract by that time.
So they'll come in the November package?
We would assume.
Yeah. I mean, the timing is timed.
Well, we can, we can tell them the times of the essence, and if they get it in, in time, certainly, you could, you could start on one a month ahead of the other one.
Right.
It would be nice to have it by the October meeting. I mean, we started it back in January, so that's...
Yeah, if they give up another month.
I don't want to give up another month, so if we can't, see if they can get it by the next meeting.
We just want to make sure that y'all realize that those agenda packages are deadline, and we don't know what type of turnaround, you know, they'll be able to see.
Well, we consider it on the agenda if we've got something to work with. If not, we'll go the next time.
Contact them tomorrow and tell them to get on the ball, please.
All right. Next item on the agenda, number six, closed session pursuant. Madam Clerk, would you read the...
Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181186, personnel at North Carolina General Statute 1433181181 to prevent disclosure of privileged information.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go into an executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening.